What's up everybody? We're gonna do a bit of squeezing now. I'm not gonna do.
Yeah, you should just fix the range so we're not gonna have to see all this junky offsuit stuff. Yeah, it's Peter sessions hard for me then. It's just like I'm usually wiped out by then, but.
Yeah.
It's past his bedtime.
Yeah.
And my bedtime.
Unless I get a nap.
Are we squeezing sevens? Not really, right?
I'm not.
Eight's not really.
I mean, you might get some king eight sometime. I don't know.
Hey, 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 don't, don't just take them out because you don't think like, take the obvious stuff out.
You can leave it a pip wide, right?
Don't, don't mess with the suited floor. Just take out like the offsuit floor.
Alright, so this is a fold?
Uh, yeah.
Easy squeeze.
I like nine.
Wow. Good luck.
Happy days.
You got scammed on the river.
Button. So I squeeze this half the time.
You should squeeze this some, I think.
Okay, let's look at the range.
So king queen off is my worst king I squeeze in this spot in that spot. Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say mostly cool.
So I kinda got my heuristic. Yeah, it's usually like ace, king off, ace, queen off and suited broadways. But then you can see it stretches a little bit to the ten lines, lines, some suited lines. I gotta find ace jack off. I gotta probably find more. Well, you, you shouldn't take all those out because the positions and stack depths are gonna be different, right? So maybe leave some of the eights in there. Okay, like Jack die ten nine off, Jack nine off, Queen nine off. They're never squeezing. King nine off, like they're never ever gonna.
I mean, this, this becomes incredibly uninteresting if you just leave the top of the range in.
Yeah. Like put all these connected.
A lot of them don't.
You should leave some offsuit aces because I think they get to squeeze out of the big blind sometimes.
So versus under the gun, I call.
I just jam.
Seven off should, should be in range still.
I'm squeezing here.
Yes, yes, this is just a jam.
I think a win.
Okay.
Jackie.
If it wasn't versus UTG and it was versus low jack, I would jam way more.
It may like King Jack more there.
Oh, Peter getting out of line.
I think this mixes, I call.
Majority call. What do you do with tens here?
Call.
Jacks.
That's a problem next more.
What do you do in a PKO?
Uh, if you cover, maybe jam Louis.
Tens are playing, jacks are playing. My mom, oh, suit the ace.
Oh. Guys are fish.
Everything.
Small blind, okay, we're gonna call that.
You're gonna flop a full skin?
We're calling.
You're gonna scam.
This uh.
That is.
Jam.
It's gonna call a little, I think. Alright, nevermind. Do tens call a little there?
I'll pick him slow down just a little bit so I can answer.
Yes.
I think then so squeezing. Maybe so.
Okay. Wait, how come jacks have a green? Huh? It said never call and then it shows call here.
It said never call that combo. It's mixing different ones, I would guess. It doesn't really matter too much.
It doesn't at all, but okay. It should just do the same frequency with every combo.
The solver, how the, why the hell would it do that?
It's pretty hard. You have a pair. It doesn't matter.
Um, this is a call.
Yeah, I call. Do we want Lisa?
I don't think he does.
Time for sure, Paul. Yeah, she's button. She look at the, oh, we can't just easily look at the button range. I think the button ride calls this more than cutoff.
So this means if the guy is like loose, too loose, you can jam, right?
What? How do you, how do you come up with that logic? Yeah.
Well, because it's like, it's only squeezing not that much. Twenty three percent of the time. So if the guys are loose, hopefully it's gonna have more trash, which is game to fold.
So you up your squeezing frequency.
No, man, like.
We are basically playing against UTG mostly.
Yeah. So like, what's the worst hand that UT, what's the worst ace that used TG and UTG one open Louis?
Some people are wild, man. Some people will, will open, will open ace seven O.
Low level.
That is the, that is the best non-answer answer I've heard from you all day. Congratulations.
So squeezing, I think you don't necessarily have to get better. Like you don't mind if some Mars hands fall probably, I'm guessing, because there's some dead money in the pot.
Right.
So the button was a pure call, right? I'll pay that. Is that what we saw?
The button?
Pure called this, right?
There's no button involved. It's under the gun, I jack.
Oh, you just looked at the button range a minute ago, didn't you?
No, we looked at hijack calling range and then cut offs action, the, the squeeze.
Oh. Alright, humor can.
This is what the button would do. Very similar, I think.
There you go. Pure call, basically.
I think it's, uh, can like to hierarchize it. The closer you are to closing position, the more you're gonna be calling with some of these hands. Like when you got people that can squeeze behind in position and put you in a tough spot, you're gonna be less incentivized. So I think hijack would squeeze less than cutoff or would squeeze more than cutoff, which is more than button. Call or fold?
Oh, I have it backwards with the.
I was thinking about repping it.
Or every suited ace is taller.
I see a six. I click fold.
You wanna squeeze some suited nines here? Maybe a nice enough every now and then, maybe some bucket eights.
I squeezed ace nine off in a live tournament a couple of months ago and it worked. It would like raise cool, cool. And I squeezed that they got all the folds.
So this is a really interesting one here and I don't know the answer, but I think this is probably a good squeeze.
I'm just calling here.
Oh.
Anything.
Pissing your love, jamming your love.
Yeah, the off nines. Let's be specific.
Being suited nines, right?
Yes. And yeah, I said, I said both shot.
So, alright, let's pretend we are in the money here. How are we changing this type of range here?
Well, I wouldn't jam queen nine very much.
No.
The jams are gonna go away.
That dance. Well, no, not from maybe. How deep are we? Thirty?
There'll be more.
The jams are going away, definitely. And then.
They go down, like you'll still have some, but it's gonna be like ace ten off, ace jack off, probably phase out. They're gonna be like not all insizings. You're probably still jamming ace five, ace four, maybe ace, king offsuit.
In six.
Queen, Jack suited, probably maybe.
No, I would remove these and use more of king six, king seven.
Oh, yeah?
Aces.
Cam, is this something we could look at easily?
Yes, you can, if you find like.
You mean guys?
So you're in the money, you're not, I, I, I'm squeezing all these suited tens in the money still, like king ten.
To be a bit deeper, I think, to squeeze a king seven, like forty or something, even thirty.
If you just look at symmetrical, thirty vags.
Three tables, I guess.
But we're playing.
What do we wanna look at?
Look at like fifty percent left or something like near bubble is gonna be on the extreme. Like you're not gonna be getting out of line on near bubble.
But we're still gonna have an idea, right?
But it's good. We can look at one extreme.
Yeah.
And then we can look at fifty percent and see how that differs.
We are big blind.
Are you? So like who's covering who in this arrangement?
Thirty big and symmetric.
Oh, this is symmetric. Okay, so.
Like we said, suited ace, suited kings, no more of this part of the deck. But this one survived the queen, Jack.
And look at the pairs also. Look at the pairs, like the pairs are like way more call happy. You're way more like blocker oriented as in like the suited kings, the suited aces and equity driven.
If you wanna block, if you wanna bluff, this part of the deck here plays well.
Is this final table?
This is near bubble.
Also, um, also just to kinda drive the point home a little bit, Louis, will you change the cutoff to like low jack or under the gun one? So you have one strong range instead of these two wide ranges?
So that will change a lot, right?
You, it should tighten up pretty significantly is why I wanted to do this.
And I'll think of a slide those, those up, uh, pit towards a stronger hands, like they all suit aces or the two aces and kings will probably shift up a bit.
Right. So now look, the king, the kings are out. The kings are out, the jacks, the suited jacks are out. You're, you're bluffy. You're not jam bluffing with your offsuit wheels anymore.
Like. Offsuit aces are just about gone. I mean, good ones like ace, queen, ace, jack, ace, ten are gone.
But there are some resilient combos here. Ace, king, pocket queens, ace, your suited wheels, like some of the stuff is just going to be competitive.
King, queen.
You know? King, queen.
Still likes those low ace shit, that ace shit.
Yeah, you should maybe add back the offsuit a sex to the, to the sim range that we're doing here.
Well, see, that's the thing like in Chippy V, I don't, unless it's really wide ranges, like you're saying, like cutoff button, big blind. I don't know how much of the offsuit a sex really gets in there. Definitely, it definitely is a component of the big blind, the big blind squeeze range though.
Um. Uh, this is.
I think this is probably a squeeze.
You don't call here?
No.
No.
Low check, high check.
Even.
Yeah.
It's low jack, high jack.
I mean, if it was earlier, I would be more cautious. Um, check.
So it's gonna be a bet bigger check, right?
Uh, a bit small actually, but.
Small.
So what happened? We squeezed and then we got rid of somebody and then it goes both flat.
Oh, this is what we were debating.
Yeah.
The other day.
You're right, Danny. I didn't, I, I wasn't sure if they had these ranges or not.
Just gotta call.
Uh, yeah, I would call. Check.
These are the fun spots.
No.
Block that.
You can bet small, right? No? Okay. Yeah, you. Pocket sevens.
Black bad. Maybe he calls.
Call.
Or maybe.
This guy just, this guy just back squeezed. What the hell?
Yeah. Yeah, that's really weird. That's gonna be like pocket, pocket.
Ace, king off?
Ace, king off, never calling the, the open.
Oh, sure it is. Frequency.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Book it.
Ace, queen. Ace, queen off.
Wow.
I'm doing a lot of calling here in game.
I'm ripping it.
Three bets.
The squeeze.
Or a call.
Louis, Louis, you can't look at that where it's like twenty five percent of the ray, twenty five percent frequency and say, look, it's a squeeze. My one.
There's no way. Yeah, but low jacks out of line, man.
It was a joke. It was a joke.
You gotta, you gotta fold.
He just has a pair. Ace, Jack, fine.
So true.
Uh, man, okay, this is, this is spicy. This is kinda scary. Yeah, I'm with Louis, actually.
Oh, look at this.
Easy.
I mean, ace Jack's not performing that well against these ranges.
We have to have the three bet. Yeah, we got three bets. Okay.
Why?
Nines. Not much calling, right? Five to say.
Look at this fish solver calling deuces.
Yeah, how could deuce never lose? You should know that.
If, if this is twenty, if it is twenty five bigs and stuff, I'll introduce this.
What a, what a fish solver.
If this is any ICM, it's gonna fold those, some of those pairs, I think.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, some of them say no, some of them say yes. I, I think, I think, um, eight is gonna perform better than jam, but jam's gonna be a reasonable frequency, I think.
Easier.
I always jam here. If it's suited, I think I can do the small three bet.
I mean, we're, we're. Actually never jamming here, except for rare circumstances.
Okay, at thirty with jacks, I could see jamming this.
This feels good to jam.
Scammed. Uh.
We could maybe, no, no, we could.
Oh.
Could fold.
Louis, seventy one big lines, seventy one big blinds per one hundred. You just.
We, we could fold, like I said.
I, I've def- I've definitely squeezed this spot before.
Uh. No, 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 man, dude, it's offsuit.
I haven't made.
You're exposing some leaks LP.
Yeah, you are.
Timing be good.
Who, who hasn't gone crazy ace ten off before? Like, come on. Just me.
Happy days. Cool.
Oh, I've, I've gone crazy. Don't worry.
Going too fast.
Yeah, it's just cool.
Well, it's suited nine. What do you wanna do?
I thought maybe my race on there and then it did. I wasn't.
You wanted three bet on the jack nine?
I'm not a professional button clicker like you. I mean, I think about my spots for a few seconds.
I don't think it.
Fold.
Three bets.
Yeah.
It's, it's offsuit, you crazies. Fold this.
Maybe king, queen with three bets. Yeah.
What is, what do you squeeze here? Offsuit.
Queen, Jack, suit, all suit, ace, queen.
Ace, queen, ace, back.
King, queen. King, queen. That's it.
Yeah. King, Jack off?
No, 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 no. Keep checking up folds.
The way.
Ace, queen here might jam some. Yeah.
It's more.
More than some.
There, there's your ace ten off, you crazies.
And king, queen.
And king, queen. How about, how about nine, eight suited?
Was that in there?
It was a very competitive option. Yeah.
I've actually used it. I felt it by his hug today when I was looking at these spots. I did.
Nine, eight suited is almost as popular as king, queen off.
I squeezed it, flopped a straight, guy flopped two pairs, he jabbed and then he turned a, uh, full house.
Uh, but alright. We're getting into story time here.
Well, I'm sorry. I find nine eight.
Call. Alright, how about this? Before you click the button, construct this range, like what are the fringes? What are the interesting three bets?
Dude, this is gonna be one of those offsuit a sex squeeze spots.
Yeah, ace is nice, fire. Three bets too.
Man, we're. Watch you, watch you pull up the, uh, pull up the handy dandy range analyzer thing and see if we can, uh, construct it.
Because I just can be growing linear.
I don't think it's gonna be as linear as you think, Ken. I think it will have a strong linear component.
Maybe Jack ten suited or Queen Jack suited get, gets in there like it's an outlier, but I think it's gonna be pretty linear other than that.
So when you say outlier, what do you mean? Like?
Like I don't think rest of the Broadway, I think most of the Broadway is gonna be happy calling. There might be some outliers with the Jack, ten, queen, Jack.
Alright, let's like Ken construct the range.
King, uh, kings.
I think ace, offsuit aces.
This is the game. Alright, let's see. Just start with the non-all-in raises. Pretend there's no jams, just it's raising. What are they?
Show the spot again really quick, please.
Low jack, small blind.
Low jack.
Low, low jack, small blind. Yeah, there you go.
Thirty five effective.
I think this is gonna be more surprising than kinda giving it credit for.
Alright, Ken. You wanna start with jams?
No, 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 just group them together. Group them together.
Me?
I'll do it. I'll do it. I'll do it. I'll do it. So Jack ten.
I can do it too for you guys.
No, 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 I don't, I don't know about also.
Is it low jack, small blind button or big blind, I mean?
Yeah, low jack, small blind.
Yeah, looking for the charge.
It's what it sounds like.
That is what it sounds like.
Alright, I'll, I'll go. Alright, so Jack ten, queen ten. Jack ten, queen ten, I think make really attractive ones because they're gonna unblock some of the, the stronger ones.
You're crazy.
Why are you looking for trust? I already said what it was.
But I think those are good. I think we are gonna pull some like non-all-insizings from some of these offsuit a sex. Like small blind is pretty capped here. Like they, they shouldn't be flattening very strong portions of their range, I think. So that's gonna like open us up to some shenanigans a little bit like, wouldn't be surprised if there's like some ace five offsuit. Some ace four offsuit, like the offsuit stuff in there. I don't think it's.
My favorite?
Maybe, I don't know. Like, yeah, in that region. Um, it's gonna, it's gonna jam pretty linearly or raise pretty linearly. So it's like aces, kings, queens, jacks, tens, um, ace, kings, your ace, queens. Um, ace, Jack, ace, jacks, I think are probably raising at thirty five. Um. And then I also think it's gonna start pulling from like maybe some of this goofy like ten, nine, Jack nine stuff, like maybe some of these weak suited nines.
How about king nine?
Um, maybe. I don't know if it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna want like having a king as much as you might think. Um, I wouldn't be surprised to see mixed frequencies of King, Jack, King, Queen, like all the suited broadways at some frequency. Like I think all that stuff is gonna be in there at some point.
Personally, I would use king nine and queen nine and not Jack nine and ten nine.
So that's.
Alright.
Um, king ten I would put in there too. And then, um, is it, what are we gonna do with pairs is the question? Maybe. I think the small blind range is gonna have some middling pairs. I think it'll have some middling pairs. So I don't, I don't know if we're gonna go crazy like with polar end of pairs, like fives through deuces. Cause they're gonna be kind of dominated here some of the time.
Yeah, pairs are just gonna call or multiple.
I think sevens plus will jam, sevens through nines will jam.
No, don't see the solution. I want to go with.
Yeah, I'll show you. I already said, I don't think all the bro shooter Broadway is your J of it or.
I would jam my screen, yeah. Shooting.
Uh, LP had a cheat.
So queen nine is there, but not king nine.
So.
Seven, eight, seven, eight, eight.
So it doesn't like the Jack as much. Okay, like suited jacks is where it's kinda drawing the line just cause I guess it merges with the call and the, the bottom of the opening range from the low check or like components of it. Um. And.
The suited tens are nice because you fold out better, right?
I kinda screwed out, um.
He don't.
Seems a little more linear with the offsuit a sex also like it's not so polar like the, the five. And the four and the three, it's more like the ten through seven. And, um, a little tight with the pairs. It's jamming wider with the pairs than I thought.
Way more polar than I thought.
But yeah, that's kinda what I was hitting at.
It's a nines make a lot of sense. You're still gonna crush a lot of small blinds pair flats.
But if this was ICM, we'd jamming more of the suited aces and the suited kings.
Probably.
This is ICM. We're probably not jamming a whole lot.
Yeah.
Alright, somebody else go. This is an interesting one too. So you got under the gun, very strong range.
One.
You got cutoff, which is approaching the button. So it almost closes position. So you're gonna have some stuff in there. Like try to construct the range from the big blind.
Hmm.
Or we go to another not so interesting one.
Don't show it.
Park a deuce? Never lose.
So now that it's earlier position, the King Jack slots in there. Hmm.
Yeah, and it's not the bottom range that, of course, it's cut off range, so it's a bit weaker. No, I mean, not weaker, but. It's not the same situation.
It's like, I struggle with knowing what are we, are we jamming King Jack suited? Are we jamming King nine suited? Are we jamming ten suited? Like which, which ones when and why?
You're gonna get your answer here, Danny, because this is ICM.
It's a. Oh, it is?
This is ICM.
Okay. What, which?
We, we looked at the thirty minutes of GPV squeeze. Now this is thirty minutes of ICM squeeze.
Fifty percent or what? I didn't see what you picked.
Near bubble.
Okay.
I would say like in that one spot where we saw like King Jack suited was like an outlier. It wasn't jamming. Like if you make a mistake and jam that, you're just like, you're, you're still gonna do fine. It's still making money. It's just, it probably makes a little bit more call, you know, like it's not a huge mistake if you're too linear.
Alright, if the big blind was a twenty stack, I would maybe go all in here, but cause he covers us all raise eight sometimes and fold sometimes.
For you.
King?
I think you get to be kind of a bully here. Um, there's a thirteen, a seventeen, a twenty.
I don't think Papa's left to act. You don't get to.
You, you gotta be a little in line. Like you can't be, you can't be just like off your, off your rocker here, but I think you're gonna get to get a little more out of line than you might think in this range.
Not with any.
Well, not, not with ten eight. I'm not saying with ten eight. I was just speaking range wise. So like suited jacks, suited queens, you got vapors of these.
It's really, we're respectful because big daddy's in the big line.
Still, he's gotta keep in mind blockers. Jerry sucks King X. You gotta always keep them in mind, right? That's what we're gonna be calling for.
Papa was instead a baby. I feel like we could just slam this in.
Yeah, well, no, but this one.
If Papa was a baby, we could, uh, we could be the big kid on the, on the block, you know, and take some lunch money.
But we can look here at what, uh, so say we just fold. This is what Papa's up to completing.
Oh, he's chilling.
He's picking it easy, well.
Well, he's also in the big blind, so it's a little bit different, but not, not terribly, right?
He's drinking Bud Light.
He is.
Foley a lot more than I would, would have thought.
Should we raise her?
Um, this is kind of interesting because forty three big blinds is like not insignificant.
But then it's bubble and then it's EPP. Could we call?
I kinda like raising. I kinda like raising. I don't know.
I'm calling here. Is this EPP? It's the bubble. Have you not been hurt before with jacks on the ball?
I, I have been hurt.
There you go.
But I've also.
There you go. There you go. There we go.
You're supposed to.
Well, this is why I jam. I don't wanna deal with this.
No.
No, 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 that before I jam.
I was folding. In real life, fold.
In real life.
Sixty five percent against the machine in real life. Get the hell out of there.
What is he doing?
Ace is coming.
This guy's psycho.
Ace is coming.
Alright, I'm all in.
Is this a squeeze?
I think near the bubble, when you're covered, you probably just lean jamming.
No.
What about if it were suited?
Same. Yes.
Not, not sure. Can we look?
Ace can almost always jump when it goes back, uh, race call.
The suited one usually likes to go small, but in that spot I might just jam anyway.
It's ace king. What are you gonna do?
You close your eyes.
Alright, fold.
This is fold, yeah. Uh. I'd call here.
Call or fold?
This is the bubble, guys. You calling here?
No.
I think. I like folding.
Yeah.
Yeah, just get out of the way. Fold. Wait, there's no call option. Alright, I fold. I fold for sure.
There is.
There's a scam here.
I got a skam asked. I would call here in game.
This could have a sliver, but I think it mainly.
Galen has free rejam stacks behind you, man.
They're on the button or they're on the bubble. Not everyone's a bubble punter, Louis.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, these guys might not be able to fold into the bubble.
Yeah, we don't know how near, near is.
Imagine Lewis has, okay, imagine Lewis has ten big blinds and he's right to your left.
I'm calling aces.
Let's say it's. No, no, no one's played against me. Louis played like five halves against me. That, that's it.
I've seen you play Lewis. Countless times, fun thing, massive stacks.
Chippy V, this can call.
I think Chippy V this.
Chippy V, that's a zone.
I would, oh, is it?
Yeah, it's a squeeze.
It's a zone.
Well, just a call. I think it's fold or raise.
I think it's just a call because you have a ten year against EP. I think it's just a call cuz you have a ten here against CP. It might be even just a fold, no?
I would fold before I call.
I think it's too tight to fold, but.
So it's a call. I call.
I call. Uh, it's a fold.
The ten is bad against CP.
But call is better than squeeze. You were right about that.
Like having a ten against early position is really bad, even having a jack is bad, you're mixing here.
We squeezed super polar, okay.
Are you guys finding the ace five jams on the bubble?
Every time.
No.
Every time.
Why are you being mini on the bubble, man? You need some gloves. You need some gloves.
You don't though. What if you just say, you know, I'm not gonna bluff?
Then you'll never have a big stack to win the tool, but you know, when you get cooled by kings and you pick an ace, you got a big stack there.
Oh my goodness, Lewis.
It's true.
You, that's never happened to you, you full bet bluff.
I used to play a lot more like that, and when I stopped playing like that, my win rate skyrocketed, so I don't play like that anymore.
What do we do here? Call?
I would link call. I wouldn't be surprised if it squeezes though.
Yeah, it's fold, it mixes folding.
Man, dude, that's pretty wild, like, I don't know, like, the risk is just so low to call and see.
Why do you think it's, uh?
Just having a nine's bad, it interacts with.
Yeah, having a nine is bad, you're blocking two EP ranges. Do you guys remember? Yeah.
You're in a world of hurt when it comes six high, you can get over set.
Alright, I got a question. What do you think's better? You think having pocket sevens or eights is better than nines here? I don't know, it may not be, it may be, it may be linear.
No, I don't.
Do you remember, guys, remember we had made the review with nines, nines are folding more than the other, uh?
So look at sixes, look at sixes there for instance, like compare the EV of sixes to nines.
We've said this thing about nines, uh.
We're saying a zero EV.
Yeah, but, uh, sixes looked less bad than pocket nines. Like negative or zero, I was looking at the raises, sorry.
We can block everything, that's all.
Yeah.
You can flop a cleaner straight draw maybe with sixes.
Now we just don't block the bottom of the range with six, with sixes and sevens.
Block the bottom, so you'll make more sets?
No, no, we, like we block pocket nine when we have pocket nines.
Well, the, the other part of that is they're more likely to have higher parts of their range.
Exactly, that's just it.
But you're trying to make a set anyway, right?
Yeah.
Not necess, not necessarily. I mean, that's the idea, that's the optimal.
All in forty percent. George is happy. Lewis. I, I never jam. King Zakov, maybe.
I'd, I'd free bet this if we were like a hundred big blends deep.
I thieve that King Zakov should, but not. Man, you put thirty-six big blends in there and all this guy snaps you off with pocket aces and then everyone is like, this guy doesn't like money or what? This is total madness.
I did a crazy bubble jam yesterday with king eight suited and I scammed queens.
Not George's money anymore, LP, he's backed.
Only. Yeah, he doesn't care anymore.
You should be very aggressive here. But you just jammed king A on the bubble, bubble, bubble.
It was different, I open jammed.
Okay, this is a win.
No.
No, oh wow.
Going with ace king. Never.
Bro, this is the spot I've been talking about. Calling ace king. Oh, I love it. Let's go. You guys were all trying to tell me that you shouldn't do it, and then here it is.
It's small blind also.
Although, although mine was sixty deep, so then the deeper it gets, maybe the more of a three bet it becomes.
Fold your ace king on the bubble.
Look at all this folding, yeah.
I just wanna play a small pot, you know?
Well, the percentage was mostly cool. It was cooling like everything, all the time.
Oh, are we looking at ICM spots?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we're near bubble. Ace king, I feel vindicated.
Like calling.
I, I call here, sevens are too good to fold.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's a mistake to call, let's see. I don't know, it's a call.
Farming your point oh four.
You look at the raise, you, you fold any pairs, I think something like twos might, like, two's might be the only ones to fold.
You were leaning towards folding or, or three betting? Without looking at the solution.
So sevens are falling a lot too, huh?
Hmm, who?
Yeah, I, I, I will, I'm limping and calling.
Look at all the jams.
Who's jamming the six-four, the, the king-four suited on the bubble?
Um.
Maybe Louis.
Me. Olive?
I fold.
No, look at the big lines, just look at this, look at this cutoff, man, this is. And we go all in here, Lewis.
No.
And the cutoff is gonna have some traps. Any big blinds, fourteen big blinds, we cover everybody.
What's the cutoff?
Just cut off flattening. Jinx.
I fold, yeah. Alright then. And the big blind is, I mean, just imagine he wakes up with jacks or queens.
We saw this, right? This was the fold.
I don't remember.
Slightly different configuration, but.
We can mix with the, with the late position here.
Someone's bad.
Now we can sum.
Uh. The guy I so called under the gun and fold if, uh, cut off.
I mean.
Gets in there.
I have no idea what to do here.
We can call, I, I.
I'm gonna raise the five.
I can never call.
I'm raising a five, cut it, calling off under the gun, one, and, and let's cut off calls.
Everything is an option apart from calling, okay? I'm, I'm surprised that it's folding so much.
I guess just bin it, yeah.
Well, look at the under the gun one stack that's opening two. That's a tight range.
And then cut off flats and it's like, what's going on here? I feel lost.
So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm probably just gonna run it.
Hang on, I just wanna see here, what do we squeeze with if ace, jack is not a squeeze?
Ace, jack is a squeeze.
Yeah.
No, it had a lot of raising.
Which is? It was folding like half the time.
A screen folding, a screen.
How, what? No, you're looking at the wrong. What is this? We were buttoned.
There's the wrong spot.
This is, yeah.
It's the previous spot, I think, or not, with the ace jack.
Uh, okay, now it's right. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so mixing jumps and folds and three bets, interesting.
Ace jack is like the island that, like ace ten suited's there in full.
Yeah.
I won one ace jack on the bubble, that. That's the conclusion.
Hmm, uh, it might has an explanation though, because, uh, uh, the small blind, uh, is it, yeah, small blind, is gonna have some, uh, flats with, uh, jacks while he's not flattening tens of suited tens.
Oh, I call.
Hold this one.
Okay, so, so when we have a jack, George, it's more likely he has a, a trap or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Block his queen, jack flat and stuff.
Hmm, that's what I was thinking.
That would be logical. Uh, all in.
We're covered. It's probably a three bet small here, cuz we're very deep, we're in the bubble.
I'm all in.
It's game. Hurt.
Call.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, called.
It's like the bottom.
What do you squeeze with there?
I think maybe some lower aces.
Lower, like ace five?
Ace five and the nuts.
And this. Ace five and aces. I said aces, I didn't say it's fine. Suit the jacks there a little bit. You said squeeze, eh? Yeah. So aces. Kings. And some, uh, ace four. Ace queen is not, ace jack is not. No. Eric, ace queen, oh, ace jack, no. Alright.
Suit a king, jack suited, brave.
Pocket sevens, call? Yeah.
Uh.
Of course not. No, it's a fold.
What is?
This guy's too short.
Yeah.
We fold every pair? Yeah, kind of.
Yeah.
No calling here, just.
I was wondering with tens, what I'd do?
Calling. I'm, I'm. Calling as well, is it?
Tough spot with tens.
You're calling kings in this spot, I think? Kings? No. No. You need to have. It was a call though, eh, or not?
Oh, that's a hole in your, it's like a blind spot for you, LP, cuz like we've seen these a lot, like you always defend the pairs no matter what, even though we've seen a lot of spots where they just fold.
Yeah.
And it seems like to be a blind spot for you, cuz you never, you always still just keep playing them.
That's a match for LP.
Is it a, uh, is it a blind spot if it's willingly blind?
Uh.
Turning a blind eye.
Not sure.
Alright.
It's kinda like you saying, uh, it's kinda like you saying, yeah, I know it's a call, but I'm fold, I'm out.
Well, I, yeah.
That's special though at twenty-five and maybe a bit shallow, I prefer. Please this one. Biggest job is.
I am folding.
What kind of size do we squeeze for? Six one five. Any allins? I think maybe at twenty-five.
Is it not all in or fold?
No.
When I fold queen three off in the big blind, Galen, I lose less EV, well, no, I guess not in the big box, I already got chips.
Yeah. Make sure it's all in, you can. We're not playing exactly thirty-two because the origin initial is shallow. So twenty-eight, something like this.
Get, get punked nerd, fold your hand.
Fold it, fold it. Louis, are you still gonna play when you're back in Canada?
Of course.
Oh yeah, cuz you're, uh.
This one, we can, uh, call, I think. Is this a fold? I call here.
I might call here.
Okay. Because we have small blind and, and the, the, the height that was deep.
They're, they're deep enough, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cool.
Call. Wow.
Alright guys, I gotta go. Good, oh, good luck. Thanks a lot, George. Have a good one.
Take it easy, George. Have a good one, man.
See you. Is this a fold? I think so.
Yeah, might squeeze a little, but I wouldn't.
No, 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 no. On the bubble. Do with ace queen here.
Okay.
What do you do with ace?
What? Oh, what do you do with ace queen here? Uh, the.
Ace queen might be.
Call?
Mix.
I don't think there's much, I don't think there's much cool in here, like actual, like you're like no calling.
No call.
No call.
No calling.
So ace queens are bluff. What else is your bluff? Ace five, you're off, yeah, got us all suited.
Oh, open jam, call, always folding. What's our calling range here?
Jacks and ace king.
So you fold ace queen suited here?
ICM.
Queen suited here.
Yes. Ace queen too, yeah?
I'm not falling ace queen off.
Yeah.
Ken, Ken.
I'm rejamming ace queen off.
Okay.
I believe we fold ace queen suited here.
No way.
With ICM?
Ace queen's a shit hand, I've learned over the past two days.
Yeah, why, why do you wanna play ace queen here?
Ace king even.
Ace queen off is folding.
Jacks is.
I did nail it though.
Equity warrior.
Ace king off, bro.
Ace king off is a lot of money here.
I'm guilty of that one.
Multi-way ace king off, like how good is that performance?
It's like no EV either.
That's the falling range from the bottom. That's the key here, I think.
Yeah, ace king's not doing that well. It's either way in front or way behind.
When you're flipping, you're probably only have five outs at best.
Lowjack button. Back to us on the bubble.
This might be a small free bet, free bet fold.
I feel like I wanna jam.
Chippie V jam.
I think I'm, I'm leaning towards jam here too.
Alright.
Well, I might squeeze.
Jamming or squeezing, both good.
We ran into it.
This is an easy fold.
These guys flattening ace king, man. They're getting us.
Oh, 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 complete? This is a call?
Nah, hmm.
Oh.
No, I don't think so.
It might be. It's either, it's either in there or just out.
I.
I think that's probably the bottom.
Okay, all in.
Yeah.
What about ace jack off here?
Fold.
You fold ace jack?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ace queen? Ooh, okay. Alright.
Whenever there's heavy ICM, ace queen just shrivels up a lot.
Nice little bear, we're gonna hit it.
Oh, it's not gonna go post small, so.
We'll never know. Alright, yeah, easy.
You don't know.
Every bear fold, right? What do you do with nines here?
Nines are bottom.
Nines, where you go. Alright, it was a nice little session, guys. Thanks a lot for hopping by.